Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome everyone to the September 21st, 2023 meetings for Sykes County Commissioners. And we're going to stand in a moment for just to have a little silent prayer if you'll join me and then after that actually Mr. Dan Bessie will lead us in a pledge of allegiance. But I did want to say something before we have our moment of silence, really to, I'd like for you to think about the family and keep in your hearts, all the fallout from Deputy Rudin Huber, Rudal Huber, finally referred to as Deputy Ruder, Rudy, who passed away in a car accident tragically last week, leaving behind his wife and two children. And I see the sheriff is here today and he made some, the comments in the paper were very moving and I really appreciated that sheriff. They were certainly appropriate. So if you would keep Deputy's family in your hearts, in your minds as we stand and have a moment of silence, and then Commissioner Dan Bessie will lead us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Citizens who are interested in participating in the public comments section portion of the meeting, you may do so by calling 336-422-1200. You will be placed on hold until the public session begins. Again, that number is 336-422-1200. And members of the audience who are interested in participating in the public session portion of the meeting today, you just need to fill out a speaker card. There are some just outside of the door and return it to the clerk. She has those that were there, but you could actually do that right now if you have not already done so. We do have actually a couple of items before we get to the public session portion. And the first deals with an agenda as a public hearing on the zoning petition of Tia Jeanette Jackson and LaMika Lyles from RS 40 to RS 20S. Commissioners have been briefed twice on this and we're going to have a summary review by Chris Murphy, Planning and Development Service Director, and he will go over that and then we will begin the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the county commissioners. Yes, this is a request of Tia Jeanette Jackson and LaMika Miles to rezon a 13.04 acre property on the northeast side of Old Hollow Road between Box Mountain Road and Phelps Drive from RS 40 to RS 20S. This is the subject property shown on the legacy growth management area plan. The subject property is located in GMA 5 directly across the road. Across Old Hollow Road 66 is GMA 4 and then just to the west is GMA 3. So it is where three different GMAs kind of come together. This is the subject property highlighted in yellow, again on the north side of 66. This is the subject property outlined in yellow. See the proposed, the subject property is primarily wooded with a stream traversing the, I would say, the north, 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 central portion of the subject property. Here is the subject property shown on the area plan. In this case, it is the rural, the northern area rural policy guide, which recommends the subject property be low density residential rural in character. Again, you do notice that this is the subject property located in GMA 5 just across the road. Again, this is the GMA 4 future growth area and where these two roads come together, this, the property here and to the southwest is in the GMA 3 suburban neighborhoods growth management area. So again, a lot of growth management considerations coming together at this, at this subject property. This is looking northeast at the subject property. You see the zoning sign in the picture. And this is looking northwest along Old Hollow Road. The subject property is to the right. This is looking southeast along Old Hollow Road. The subject property is to the left. This is looking southwest across from the subject property, so across Old Hollow Road. This is looking west, again, across Old Hollow Road from the subject property, again, looking towards the west, looking at the existing residential structures on the south side of Old Hollow Road. This is the proposed site plan. Again, this is an RS 20S rezoning. The 13 acre site will yield, under the existing RS 40 zoning, would yield 14 residential lots. The request is for an RS 20S rezoning because dealing with lot size and lot width, the number of lots proposed with this RS 20S request is 15. So one additional lot, the main purpose behind the request is the lots that are shown here outlined in red, so 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 lots. These lots do not meet the lot width requirements and these are the lots that are less than 30,000 square feet in size. So around, you know, between 20 and 30,000 square feet, the remaining lots are all greater than 30,000 square feet. And that was an important distinction because there is some RS 30 zoning in this area in addition to RS 40. So that was one of the reasons why we're concentrating, looking at the RS 30. You know, in looking at what the Northeast Rural Area Study Guide says in Legacy 2030, this request is inconsistent with those recommendations. Legacy generally recommends preserving the rural character of GMA 5 and recommends against intensifying residential zoning districts to allow additional density. The request represents an encroachment of higher intensity, single-family zoning in GMA 5 that could promote further land use intensification outside of the serviceable land area. Those, you know, that's one side of the coin. You know, the planning board in their review and recommendation to the commissioners on this request, looked at its location. It was the close proximity where GMAs 3, 4, and 5 come together, the need for housing, and the fact that even though it is a request for RS 20, they're only adding one additional unit under what's allowed under base zoning. The RS 40 zoning would allow 14 units. They're requesting 15. The main thrust behind the request for the RS 20 is the lot width and lot size, given the location and the narrowness of the lot where it attaches to Old Hollow Road. So with those, they felt like that this could be deemed appropriate with the proposed densities and development patterns assured through the special use district plan. With that, it was heard by the planning board at their August 10th, 2023 public hearing. There were two speakers in opposition. The opposition did raise concerns related to precedent, if approved, the GMA considerations, traffic safety, the size and style of homes, the loss of wildlife, and potential impacts to property values. Following the public hearing and discussion, the planning board did vote eight to one to recommend approval of the request for the rezoning. Prior to any questions of me, I do want to turn to County Attorney Watkins, who would like to discuss the types of information that can be considered in making this rezoning decision.
Thank you, Chris. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Just as a reminder, a rezoning petition is a legislative matter. The board should consider the requirements of the legacy comprehensive plan and the applicable area plan. The board may consider whether the particular proposed use would justify an amendment to the comprehensive plan, given current planned and authorized uses in the area near the site. The board should not consider factors that are not the subject of the rezoning petition, such as whether or not the property could be used as affordable housing. The board should not consider personal information about the proponents or opponents of the petition and the board should not consider impacts that would occur regardless of rezoning. Thank you.
With that, I'm available to answer any questions.
I do want to ask one question at the beginning. Could you go back to the map of the plat of the proposed development? And it's kind of small, but I did look over on Lot 15, way over in that lower right-hand corner, extended back. I noticed that the location of the, sort of the proposed, sort of footprint of the house is actually right next to the property line. And I don't know what the, well, my computer at home had a little bigger, I don't know what the distance is, but it looks like it is extremely close to that property line. Do you know what that distance is? And it seems, there's no buffer at all between the property?
Well, and again, you are correct, Chairman Martin. The RS 20 zoning, again, this is RS 20, RS adjacent to RS requires no intervening buffer. This isn't a planned residential development. It's a subdivision to a subdivision. So what takes precedent there is the setback for the underlying district. For RS 20, you have a side, a minimum side setback on one side of seven feet and then a combined setback on, you've got seven feet on one side and you have to have at least 13 on the other to have a combined setback of 20 feet. That's what's shown here. Now, again, you know, again, this is, this is a S plan and the lot configuration can't really change. I mean, we would not make them build the house exactly seven feet off that property line. That would have to be at least seven feet off that property line. Under the existing RS 40 zoning, that side setback is 10 feet. So really, the rezoning allows three feet closer than what the existing zoning allows, but there is no buffering required between a subdivision and other residentially zoned property.
Yeah, and that, just looking at the topographical, you know, map, it is really, really, in fact, that's about the only site that's, it's not level, but it's less incline than slope. And that's a tough site.
It's a footprint. It wouldn't have to be, you know, it wouldn't have to be exactly there. I don't know if that's the size. And again, that may be a better question for the site plan preparer whenever he gets up as far as whether there is a way to shift that further to the northeast. But it does look like there's a draw coming through there.
Yep. Good. Other questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman? You indicated that in theory, given the size of the tract, that under the existing RS 40 zoning, they could get in 14 lots. If you can answer this question based on evidence and information, I should say, not evidence, information in the record regarding site topography and features, could they, as a practical matter, get in that many lots, buildable lots under the current zoning? Or would it likely be less in practice?
As I, I believe you asked that question last week and I speculated that I felt like probably, they could probably get 11 lots under the existing zoning and the lot widths and the constraints of the entrance. And as we left, I actually spoke to the site plan preparer and asked him how close I was and he felt like that was fairly close. So 11-ish, could be 10, could be 12. So let's just settle on 11. And he may be able to also, he may have actually sketched that out and have a definitive answer, but I felt like I was in the ballpark when I answered that last week and I did confirm that with him.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Other questions?
I have some, but I'll wait till after the public hearing.
All right. Okay. This is a public hearing and speakers will have up to 15 minutes total to speak in favor of this request and up to 15 minutes total to speak in opposition. And is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of the petition? And if you would, just come up and you can introduce yourself, give us your address. And I'm keeping track of the 15 minutes. So if you take too much time, no one else will have an opportunity to speak.
Well, good afternoon, Commissioners, Chairman and Commissioners. Thank you for your time and thank you all for what you do. I'm Paul Stimson. I work with LaBella Associates. I'm the regional leader and a professional engineer and happy to be working for Ms. Tia Jackson of Blackjack Lands. This development is planned for 15 home sites and low density. And for clarity, the state stormwater group defines low density as anything that's two dwelling units per acre or less. And they also define it as a development that's 24% built upon area or imperviousness, roofs, houses, or roads or less. This development is planned for 1.15 homes per acre and also 11.56% BUA, which is very low density. So I wanted to point that out. We were required to do tree save calculations and Ms. Jackson hired a professional land surveyor to go out on the site, locate all the streams. And what we've done is shown 30 feet of stream buffer off all the tops of banks of the streams. And those will be recorded on a plat by a professional land surveyor and this land will be preserved in perpetuity. And the amount of tree save area that was required was 50,803 square feet. This special use plan shows 96,647 square feet. So almost double what is required in tree save areas. In addition, there's going to be a perimeter of trees saved all the way around the property. And you say, why is that? Well, the reason is, is because the septic fields, by state law, a septic field has to be 10 feet off the property lines. So there will be an automatic tree save buffer around the property before the septic fields start. And the areas that we've shown hatched on the plan are conservative. Those areas may well be smaller once the appropriate permits are obtained through the Forsyth County Health Department for the septic fields. A low-density stormwater permit will be obtained from NCDQ, that's North Carolina Department Environmental Quality, Stormwater Division. And what it does, it requires the minimization of storm pipes. So there's not a lot of drainage structures. There's, pipes are held to a minimum up under the road where there might be a gully with drainage coming to a point. The pipes will be as minimal as possible and vegetated conveyances or grass swells used to the maximum extent practical in the neighborhood. The State Stormwater Division also requires operation and maintenance agreements to be recorded, Forsyth County Register of Deeds. And these maintenance agreements tell how the grass swells are going to be stable and mowed over time and maintained. They also, we have to send them a copy of the record plat, which shows the stream buffers and also the private drainage easements that will be recorded. The developer will construct the water system to City of Winston-Salem standards and obtain the authorization to construct, the ATC. And we've also coordinated with the Forsyth County Fire Marshal, who said the layouts of the street are adequate. The first cul-de-sac has a large 96 diameter bulb, which meets with his approval, and also the turnaround on the eastern side of the site meets with the Forsyth County Fire Marshal's approval. And one of the biggest challenges is gravity sewer, or the lack thereof. There's no gravity sewer lines out here. So the developer will go through the proper channels of permitting with Forsyth County Health Department to get the septic fields permitted. Also, the streets will be constructed to NC DOT standards with ribbon pavement without curb and gutters. So the runoff is more readily dispersed in the roadside grass channels versus being concentrated in a curb. So that's a plus. I met with the NC DOT on site. Just so you'll know, when we started out in the master planning phase, the entrance drive, we shifted further over to the right or to the, to the east. And the DOT had some concerns about site distance. So I met with assistant district engineer in the field and we walked it. They require a certain amount of site distance. And what that is, is 100 feet for every 10 miles per hour speed. So you go five miles over the posted speed on the road and you design it for higher, which is 50 miles per hour in this case. So we got the wheel and we walked. The district engineer and I walked and he determined that site distance is adequate based on how this driveway has been shifted. So you can see both to the west and also to the east 500 feet. And the developer will get a driveway permit from DOT. And as you know, they thoroughly reviewed the submittals to make sure the public is protected before they'll issue a driveway permit. And I wanted to point out too, for your consideration, please, on Lot Number One, since the, the road right of way we shifted, there's a 50 feet of public road right of way, it only left 21,000, 25,147 square feet on that area on Lot One. So it couldn't meet the RS 40 by the letter of the law. But what we respectfully request is that we can have your consideration to rezon at RS 20 so a home site can be put there and still have a quality home site outside the DOT right of ways. As mentioned, the streets have been designed to help minimize impact to the environment. Elijah Drive would have also been 20 feet wide, but the Forsyth County Fire Marshal dictated that that street be 26 feet wide. And we made the cul-de-sac street as narrow as we could at 20 feet wide. But if a street gets longer than 500 feet, they want it 26 feet wide. But it's still, the advantage is there's no curb and gutter. There's roadside grass swells to help and filtrate the runoff and minimal pipes in this case. And I wanted to, to point out, that home on Lot 15, I just spoke with the developer, that house can be moved to be 20 feet off the property line. That was for illustration purposes. It does look very close, Mr. Martin. I agree with you. It was shown at seven feet as for an illustrative purpose of where a house could be, but she's agreed to move it and have it at least 20 feet off the property line to better help preserve that tree buffer. That is shown for illustrative purposes. And Mr. Bessie, I did the configuration after your question last week, and this development would actually lose six lots. And because what happens, if you had a lot that was 40,000 square feet, it doesn't mean there's necessarily good soils for septic. So if you had a lot, the minimum width on an RS 40 lot is 100 feet by Forsyth County Unified Development Ordinance. In the RS 20, the minimum lot width is 95 feet, and these lots are 95 feet. So there's not very much difference, but we could not get, in theory, what a person would say the yield would be because of the unusual conditions and circumstances on the site with the gullies, if that makes sense. So I did want to point that out. But in summary, this is, this neighborhood is planned to be a low-density development. And the development will provide quality home sites, homes which I think is greatly needed in Forsyth County. The stream buffers will be preserved on the interior areas and they're also the buffer, as I mentioned, around the perimeter due to the septic fields having to be 10 feet off the property line. And we looked at, we looked at doing a PRD, a planned residential development, but in that scenario, one has to provide 20 feet of open space or buffer yard around the property that's not on the lot. So in that scenario, you have to go 20 feet off the property line and then you have to go 10 feet off of that for the septic field. So it would mean you 'd be automatically 30 feet off the property line. And that takes away good soils where the lots are clustered on the higher ground for good septic soils, if that makes sense. And we tried to leave the lower areas preserved in stream buffers in this special layout that we've done. So based on the merits of this, this layout and the qualities of this neighborhood, we so really appreciate your consideration for this special use zone and feel like it's being mindful of the environment, but also providing quality homes here in Forsyth County. And I would like to introduce the developer, Ms. Tia Jackson, to come up and introduce herself, if that's okay. Thank you.
I'm Tia, owner of Blackjack Lands. I live on the north side of town, grew up there my whole life, currently live six minutes away from where I brought the property at. All I'm really trying to do is bring good quality homes to this side of town. Didn't know when I bought the land that it was going to be so many obstacles. So what Paul is trying to do is just work around all the obstacles. The, the smaller homes, as you said, the smaller lots is only because of the cul-de-sac. And the 15 homes is to help with the sewage so we wouldn't have to do as much, as many pipes throughout the land. The first meeting we had, we had some neighbors who were against it. So we took everything they said into consideration and that's why we're trying to do more buffers, leave, excuse me, leave more trees up. Not trying to mess up the neighborhood, just trying to make it better. That's all.
Thank you. We have about four minutes left. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor?
Just want to thank you again for your time and consideration in what you do. And we feel like we're being responsible to the environment in this subdivision, master plan. That's why we wanted to do the special plan and not just say, we want to rezone to RS 21 to show you that, how we're doing it. And we feel like we're, we're being responsible in this way. So thank you again.
Right. We, we may ask you back up for us to answer some questions afterwards, but thank you. All righty. Is there anyone that'd like to speak in opposition? I'll reset here for 15 minutes. You can come up and just give us your name and address and let me get my...
Hello. My name is Julie Ames. My address is 1519 Old Hollow Road, zip code 27105. I own a 25 acre farm and share a property line with the property in question. You have probably received an email from me before the meeting, so I'm going to keep my concerns short. I understand that the Beltway will bring growth to our rural communities and I welcome it. However, I don't think this is the type of growth our community needs. We need to protect the remaining rural communities in Forsyth County and not try to urbanize or overdevelop them. We need to protect the limited GMA 5 area of our county and I feel approving this zoning change will surely open the gate for other developers to look for land in this area and petition for more zoning changes. I believe that these developers are trying to build as many homes on this land as they possibly can without really a true regard to the environment or surrounding neighbors. Like we talked about lot 15 on there with the house close to the property line, that's on my property line. So obviously that's a concern of mine. That house will also require a driveway be built across the creek. So that's another concern as well. The topography is really steep on that piece of land. My land back there does a very similar thing and I've been on that property before over the years while I've lived here. So I'm very familiar with what it, what it looks like. So I find it hard to believe that house could just easily be moved over. But it also, I feel presents issues with the other homes being built and the road, which I'll get to. The main road for the subdivision goes right along the property line of another neighbor of mine and their home is pretty close to that property line. And it doesn't appear to me that there are any trees or anything. It's just a grass swell is what I keep hearing and doesn't look like it. So you've got a really steep road. That's the main road going in and out of this neighborhood. That means there's going to be a lot of traffic. If there are 15 homes, there's at least 15 cars, right? But more often, it's probably 30 to 45 cars in this neighborhood. So the neighbors who are right by that road are going to hear squeaky breaks of people going down the road constantly and engines revving going up the hill constantly because according to this map, the way I read it and knowing the land, it's going to be a pretty steep road. I feel like quite a few trees are going to be taken out of this area, which is just kind of sad. There's a lot of trees, as you saw in the satellite image. I mean, there's going to be, it's going to change it a lot. And that's just going to affect the ecosystem, the air quality, noise pollution, and just the overall aesthetics of our rural community. I understand that they can technically build 14 homes on this land with the current zoning. So one more shouldn't be a big deal. However, I believe it actually is because I think each one just adds more. I can't think of the word, but I can't think of the words, so I'll just keep going on. I honestly believe 14 homes is way too many for this particular piece of land, but 14 would be better than 15. The entrance and exit of the subdivision, as has been brought up, is located in a very dangerous curve on Old Hollow Road. I obviously live right down the road, so my property kind of is spread out, but my entrance to my property is on Old Hollow, right down the road from here. So I utilize this curve multiple times a day. I have witnessed numerous accidents and almost daily close calls in this curve. Increasing the traffic volume here and having cars turn in and out of this subdivision is just not a good idea. Obviously, no turn lanes are being added or any other road safety improvements are being made because they went out and measured. I understand there's measuring and I, I understand that the engineer approved it, but in my defense, neither Mr. Stimson or who he met out there to measure lives in this neighborhood. So they don't see it on a daily basis. The creek, obviously, with a steep bank runs through that property and is essential for keeping storm waters and flooding, storm water, sorry, from flooding the surrounding roads and properties as well as providing clean drinking water to the abundance of wildlife in the area. In the proposed subdivision, 11 of the 15 homes will be built on the creek and one will have the driveway across it. At least five of those homes will have their septic drain fields on the opposite side of the creek from the home. That means the septic lines will have to be placed over, under, or through the creek. So hopefully none of them leak, right? All of this will definitely put a strain on the ecosystem. There's a high risk of the creek becoming blocked or polluted due to this subdivision. And if either of those things happen, it would create serious consequences for this community and also my farm. I'm asking that you consider the issues this could cause for our rural community and do not approve the zoning change at this time. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We have almost nine minutes left. Anyone else that would like to speak against this proposal?
Questions for Chris first.
I'll declare the hearing closed and then we'll go to questions.
I'm not asking any questions, just if you can answer them, I know you can.
We'll see.
I got several. The attorney mentioned perimeter all the way around. Is that a condition?
I believe you're referring to the site plan preparer.
Yeah, is it, well, is it, he said there's a perimeter. So is, if there is, then...
There is nothing shown currently. So if you would like to, if you would like for that to be a condition of approval and it be binding, it would have to be a condition that you would add that they would agree to because it's not shown on the plan.
The reason, or I'm asking, is the reason to go down to RS 20s? They can't get to amount of lots that they would like to get without going down to 20. After looking at that closer, it appears to me that there's, well, it says so in here, there's a stream that runs, I don't know whether exactly in the center of the property or not, but nevertheless, one there in the topo could not, might be steep in some areas. So the RS 20s or the allows for a, down to a 100 foot lot width?
I believe it's less than that. If you hold on one second, I'll get to the, I looked at the side, I didn't look at the lot width. The lot width for RS 20 allows a 95 foot lot width versus an RS 40, which is a 100 foot lot width. So it's, it's, allows a slightly narrower lot, but in this context, those, the map that's in front of you, those one, two, three, four, five, those six lots that are shown, outlined in red are all less than 30,000 square feet in size. So that's why they have requested the RS 20 versus keeping it at RS 40 or RS 30. And it kind of ties back to what Commissioner Bessie asked earlier and I believe also that the site plan preparer attempted to answer. If, if they were to develop under the existing RS 40 zoning, even though the base acreage allow, would allow 14 units, there's no way that they could actually get 14 units because of the configuration of the piece of property. So it would probably be closer to 10 or 11.
Or nine. I think he said, he said nine.
I was writing down other notes. I didn't hear the exact number that he said, but...
Well, the configuration is, are you talking about in size or is it, it appears to me that maybe the topo's got something to do with it too.
I think it's a combination of the two. I think it's the size and the topo and the, and the constraints on where the road has to go, where it has to tie back in, out into Old Hollow Road.
Is there a, a water line that runs along 66 there or not?
It's my understanding, yes. It's, it's indicated to be public water and then they're showing a connection. I'm assuming it's along Old Hollow, but I, I did not take a look at that, but they are indicating public water, so they will be tying into city county utility water. I'm just assuming it's on Old Hollow.
So, okay, I guess I got a, one or two questions for the attorney now for the petitioner. Mr. County Attorney, I'm going to ask him about what their intentions is about cutting timber or not cutting timber. Under a RS 40, they might not be able to do just whatever they want to do if it was this RS 20s, but if it's general use, then they can. I got some questions about cutting the timber.
So unless, unless there's a condition that's specifically written down and agreed to, as Mr. Murphy indicated, you know, that would only be tied to what the zoning says. And so generally you can cut timber when you're developing property.
But with special use condition, can, you can still cut some anyway because you've got to put roadways in it, but under general use, I know that you're allowed to, but that's part of what I'm, okay, I'll just, I'll just leave my questions at that for the moment.
All right. I'd like, I'd like to ask one question about the cul-de-sac and the, where the red dots around there are very clear, the cul-de-sac, but at the end of that, where it says 917 feet, I don't see exactly a cul-de-sac. I'm just trying to think of vehicles at the end. Fire truck goes down there and I, and I promise you, there'll be requests for a school bus to go down there, even, even though it just meets the two tenths, it's just under two tenths of a mile, which is a typical school bus stop difference, but go ahead.
The turnaround that's proposed down at lot 15 where it says 917 feet is, is what's known as a, a hammerhead turnaround and that is within the...
Three-point turn.
Yeah, that, that's within the, within the NC DOT infrastructure standards as well as it is an acceptable method for fire. So fire did review this and they do allow both T turnarounds and hammerheads. They don't all have to be cul-de-sacs. So presumably a, a fire truck, a bus, a garbage truck would come down there and either pull straight towards lot 15 and back into that hammerhead to the north and then make that three-point turn and go back out. Or they would come down, turn left into, you know, like towards lot 12 and 13 and then back up towards lot 15 and head out. So that is an acceptable method of ending a road.
Mr. Chairman, I believe that the indication of that turn is blocked on this, where it says 917 feet. You, you can't see it because it's covered up.
Maybe that's where the hammerhead.
Yeah, it is. I'm sorry, I left, just so everyone could see, but I can actually back that, oops. I say that, there you go. So you can actually see the hammerhead on the north side there now without those numbers
So in terms of special, I have one other thing. So in terms of sort of the special as indicating some language about the perimeter trees that were mentioned, the moving the lot 15 house off of the property line further, talked about 20 feet, for example, and those kinds of things, if that were, if that were to be approved, I think those kinds of things would have to be added into that for me.
That, that's correct. If you, you know, if they're, you know, the, the engineer did mention the, you know, the perimeter buffer, which is not shown on the plans and I'm not sure what their plan is on, as far as what that no disturbance area would be, but if that's something that they are indicating that they are going to do or are willing to do in order for that to be something that would be binding, it would need to be a condition of approval as part of this petition, if that's something that, that the commissioners desire to do. And similarly on lot 15, while I have no doubt of the intentions that they could do that, unless there was a specific condition of approval that said that the building envelope for lot 15 would have to be 15, 20, I mean, whatever you wanted to do off of that southern property line, again, there wouldn't be anything that would bind them to that without a condition of approval. So if that's the commissioners' desire, both of those things would need to be crafted in your, in whoever's approval recommendation, if that's the way the commissioners decide to go.
Mr. Chairman, I have some other comment. I have seen recently, very recently and over a period of time in the last few years in development that development is, can be done. Property owner has a right to do certain development, but in some cases, and it's not... certain development, but in some cases, and it don't all of it have to do with rezoning, some of it is just happening, about encroachment on other property buffers and that kind of thing, if they were in place. I'm going to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to continue this matter till the next meeting. And one of the, a couple of thoughts, one of them, Chris, would be, he mentioned there would be a perimeter, then whether the petitioner would be willing to put that down as a condition and agree to that, and then as to whether, beyond that, whether they have intentions of clearcutting or not, if it's a, Mr. County Attorney, if it's a special use zoning, and the board wanted to put in there not to clearcut, cut where they got to put their dwellings and the streets, and that could be done in a case like this with, I believe, but is that a condition if the petitioner agreed to it, that one, too, about clearcutting?
So you have to be careful, because we're talking about lots that have septic fields, and so you would, you would need to do a lot of cutting for that, is my impression. So I'm not sure exactly how that could be defined. It's something I'm sure planning could look into. The perimeter is definitely something that could be agreed upon by the parties, if that's something they're amenable to.
Okay. Well, at least, my motion would put into it, at least, the perimeter all the way around. I'm not exactly sure what the size that would be, and I would ask you to look into the second question about the clearcutting beyond what's needed for septic field, house, and streets.
And I would also include, in that part, I'll second the motion, but then I'll ask to include the, locating the proposed house siding at least 20 feet off of the property line, and if I heard correctly from the engineer, is that really talking about clearing 51,000 square feet, and that basically, the maximum is 90-something thousand square feet, and that you're actually clearing half of what the could be? Did I hear that incorrectly? That was, that was from the tree person.
Mr. Martin, what I said is, by the tree save, there's tree save area calculations that have to be performed when, before you get a grading permit. This site required 50,803 square feet, so 1 point something acres. The amount of trees that are being saved already down at the stream buffer is double, is just about 96,647 square feet. So the amount of trees that are being saved with the stream buffer is just about double what is required. I was pointing out that due to the nature of a septic field having to be off a property line by 10 feet, by the nature of that, it's going to leave a 10-feet buffer, because the septic lines can't be any closer than 10 feet to the property line. And some of those trees are nice hardwoods that are larger oaks, so I wanted to point that out, and that's not included in the 96,000. So Ms. Jackson's already going above and beyond the 50,000 square feet minimum tree save required. This site plan is already 96,000, which is just about double, if that makes sense.
Right, I misheard it. It's the, it's the tree save, not the tree, not the tree cutting.
Right, so it's already way more than, than, than what's typically required, plus the septic lines on the rear of some of these lots could be as close to 10 feet of the property line, but if the soil scientist lays it out and gives the approval for 20 feet off the property line, then there'll be 20 feet of trees, but you don't know until they actually do the soil testing in the field. Hope that answers the question.
I got it, thank you. Any other, any other discussion before we act on the motion to continue till the next meeting?
Yes, Mr. Chair. The, this is probably a combination of the engineer and our county attorney. When I was on the city council, and it was an S-zoning request, items that are designated on the, on the site plan were also considered to be part of the record in binding, in the same fashion that a narrative condition would be. Was that a misunderstanding on my part, or different interpretation here? For example, designation of wooded area would be, you know, a binding factor.
I mean, I mean, that certainly could be put on the site plan, and it would, but it would also be put in the conditions. We just want to be very clear about that. And I will add to further explain about the septic area, and the health department folks can certainly correct me when we come back in a couple of weeks if need to, but when I dealt with them in the past, they would require an area for the septic field, they would also want to have a repair field area, which, which would give you twice the time on your septic system. So that is going to be a considerable amount of property that the trees might have to be cut from.
But it would be possible to designate in conditions that the, that the stream buffer, for example, and anything designated as a wooded area, street save area, would be treated as a condition of the, of the approval, if, assuming the, assuming the applicant agreed to that condition.
Yes.
All right, thank you. And just for, for discussion, I have to say that I'm, I'm extremely uncomfortable with the planning board's majority decision in their rationale for the approval. The fact that a, a property in Growth Management Area 5 is on the, on the border, I think is a very poor rationale for saying, well, it's okay to change it over the border, because that, that leaves you vulnerable to stepping stone development. So if, if it's, turns out to be the, this board's majority view that, that this is an appropriate request, I'd be interested in hearing any alternative interpretations of the reason why this should be allowed, other than, well, it's just on the border, and therefore, the, the GMA designation shouldn't count. That's the discussion, then.
Chair Martin, I do have a question, and something to consider for the good of the whole. First, I would just like to thank Ms. Jackson for your willingness to help us with affordable housing, which is a grave need in Forsyth County and across our state and nation. So I definitely, and I think the commissioners all appreciate your willingness to step up to the plate and to help us to do something about a very grave situation in our community. My question is, what kind of disadvantage would it be if we had to delay this for another week? As you can see, it's six of us, so if there was a tie, it would fail by way of the original motion, so that might be something for consideration as it relates to making sure you have full advantage of the full commission, so, but I did want to ask about the disadvantage, if you had to come back based on the concerns that Commissioner Linville has, and to try to move forward from there.
Well, I did speak with a developer, and she is okay showing the 10-feet buffer around the perimeter, where it's physically doable. Obviously, where the entrance road is, there wouldn't be a 10-feet buffer, because the street right of way has to be built, but she agreed to that. And she also agreed to, that the house on Lot 15 could be 20 feet off the property line to provide even more buffer to the neighbor. So both of those, she's okay with doing. And we just respectfully appreciate your consideration for approving it. Gravity sewer's not available, but we think it's a good alternative to have septic fields to provide sewer service with the city public water main. And I think it preserves the environment, because the buffers are shown and will be preserved on surveyor's plat in perpetuity. And we have to get a stormwater permit from the state, and it's a very rigorous process to get a stormwater permit from the state. And the tree save area is 96,000, which is way over the minimum 50,000 that's required. So we really appreciate it, and Ms. Jackson looks forward to building quality homes in this area.
Chairman, I wanted to just make sure that I'm clear with your answer. I did all the, all the, the response or the comments from Commissioner Woodbury, but I also wanted to just make sure that I heard clearly that this would not put you or Ms. Jackson at a disadvantage if we were to labor this at another time. Because again, I agree with her sentiments, I want to make sure that we have full advantage of the majority on the board, and I can't say that we're here today. So I'm just looking to you for some...
He asked Ms. Jackson, come up here, please, Ms. Jackson.
Some direction.
Just for clarity, that would be October 5th.
Okay, that's fair.
October 5th.
October the 5th, okay. Thank you so very much, I appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience.
The purpose of my motion to continue was to give the petitioners time to give consideration to what we're discussing, rather than just go ahead and vote.
I agree. Chairman, I'm sorry, Commissioner Linville, I agree, that's fair, thank you.
But we have a motion and a second to delay consideration of this number, the 1562, until October the 5th. In favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Second item on the agenda is a public hearing to consider the expenditure of county general funds for an economic development project and authorize an agreement with Purple Crow Investments LLC. And Hosani Mitchell from Community and Economic Development Program, or Community and Economic Development Program Administrator is going to give us a brief overview, and we have briefed this twice also.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. As you stated, we have briefed this item twice, and so today, I will provide just some granular details regarding the project and the county's incentive package. So this is an economic development incentive for the expansion of a local Hispanic food distributor. The project code name is Project Fiesta, but as we've stated in the briefings, the company name is Purple Crow, or Purple Crow Investments LLC. And so this is a Hispanic food distributor located here in Winston-Salem, and they serve large markets, not only here in Forsyth County, but also in the mid-Atlantic region. And Purple Crow has been located right here in Winston-Salem since 1995, and they currently have operations on Lowry Street. The company has 250 full-time employees, and they recently completed a 75,000-square-foot cold storage expansion. And due to that expansion, and due to that projected growth, company is needing to relocate their headquarters and their operations to a new site that's going to handle that projected growth. They've been considering other locations, not only here in Forsyth County, but also in Davidson County, Atlanta, and potentially in the mid-Atlantic region. The company is proposing a $50 million capital investment for their expansion, and this includes a $31 million investment in real property and a $19 million investment in machinery and equipment. This expansion is projected to create at least 199 full-time jobs, and those jobs would have an average salary of $72,635 per year. I've included a snapshot of those potential jobs, and they include administrative positions, warehouse labor positions, drivers, general labor, and sales. We'll take a look at the county's incentive package. This would be a five-year incentive, and the county's max incentive would not exceed And with their $50 million capital investment, that would generate $2.8 million in taxes over 10 years, and the county, we would retain 75% of those taxes, which would net to $2.1 million in taxes over 10 years. City of Winston-Salem is also considering economic development incentives for this project. They are considering a five-year incentive for $694,281. And State of North Carolina also has pending incentives to support this expansion as well. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Hosani. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, and speakers will have up to 15 minutes total to speak in favor of this request, and up to 15 minutes total to speak in opposition. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of this request? Just share your name and address, please.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Laura Lee with Greater Winston-Salem, 525 Vine Street, Winston-Salem. Greater Winston-Salem Inc. is so grateful for your support and consideration of this exciting project. We're eager, eager for this potential expansion of a quality employer in Forsyth County, and we really look forward to this transpiring in our community if we win this project. And we're thankful for the company's decades of roots in our community, and what this would be able to do with growing $50 million of investment and nearly 200 jobs that they're committing to at this point, and also reinvigorating a property in Whittaker Park as, as a result of that. And so we appreciate your leadership as we work to grow jobs and capital investment throughout our county. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition? I'll declare the public hearing closed, so do we have a motion?
I'm of approval.
I'll second that. Any discussion?
Did have, have one question. The, the company is currently occupying the Lowry Street location, talking about an expansion at Whittaker Park. Does the company have plans indicated for the Lowry Street facility?
We do have a company executive with us here today, but they do have four locations in, in Forsyth County. They will continue to hold the Lowry Street location as an operation, but needed a larger location for their headquarters and additional operations.
I thought I remembered that during the briefing, I just wanted to confirm it, thank you.
I was assuming a 75,000-square-foot cooler probably wasn't going to be moved, so it would probably stay where, stay where it was.
Large investment there as well.
Yes. All righty. So, any other discussion? In favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All righty. Next item on the agenda is a resolution recognizing September 2023 as National Infant Mortality Awareness Month, and Vice Chair Wizard Hunt will actually go down to the podium and read the proclamation, and Lisa Walker, the nursing program manager, actually will, I think, come forward and receive it. There she is. There they are. We have multiple people, I see. They're coming right behind you, yeah.
A couple of us did walk a mile for our babies, and then a couple Commissioners joined us afterwards. So Dr. Martin and I walked a mile, and Commissioner Bessie and Commissioner McDaniel joined us, and we had a program afterwards, and it was really nice. I will say, walking a mile this year was much cooler than last year. Thank you. This is a rec, uh, resolution recognizing September 2023 as National Infant Mortality Awareness Month in support of the 12th Annual Walk a Mile to Save Our Babies in Forsyth County, North Carolina. Whereas the month of September is National Infant Mortality Awareness Month, and it is imperative to increase community awareness about the high rates of infant deaths. Whereas Forsyth County communities are encouraged to support women and mothers-to-be in such a way as to ensure their health and wealth being and that of their children. Whereas Walk a Mile to Save Our Babies will coruncy, coincide with events across the nation to bring attention to high rates of infant mortality. Whereas in 2021, 36 Forsyth County infants died before their first birthday. And in 2020, 31 Forsyth County infants died before their first birthday, with figures equalling 5,118.8 years of potential life lost. Whereas in 2021, Forsyth County infant mortality rate was 8.1 deaths per 1,000 live births and exceeded the statewide race rate of 6.8. Whereas Forsyth County African-American babies die disproportionately when compared to other babies, accounting for 56% of infant deaths in the most recent reporting year. Whereas prematurely in low birth rate, birth defects, sudden unexpected infant deaths, and unsafe sleep practices are significant contributors to infant death and disproportionately affect minority communities. Whereas the Forsyth County Infant Mortality Reduction Coalition has endeavored to foster a spirit of awareness and equality to combat the incidence of infant mortality and maternal, maternal morbidity. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners hereby recognize the month of September as Infant Mortality Awareness Month and support the goals of the Forsyth County Infant Mortality Reduction Coalition's efforts to raise awareness of the problem of infant mortality in our community with the 12th Annual Walk a Mile to Save Our Babies. And be it further resolved that the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners challenges all public and private entities to better understand their role in addressing the social behavior and health factors that affect birth outcomes, and in so doing, protect and promote the help of Forsyth County's youngest and most vulnerable system, citizens, citizens, adopted this 21st day of September 2023. And I move approval.
I'll second it. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Motion carries unanimously.
Would you like to have, have a word? Come on up.
Hi, my name is Shalonda Burton, and I just wanted to say I thank you all for looking at this proclamation today and taking time to listen to us. Thank you.
Shalonda is chair of the.
Thank you.
I want to thank you from the Department of Public Health. We are committed to this cause, and the Walk a Mile is just the pace setter for the things that we're planning to do this next year to address these concerns. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think Todd's trying to get a picture, Commissioner Wisnutt.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is a resolution recognizing September 2023 as National Preparedness Month. And Commissioner Woodbury is coming to the podium to read that, and I'd like to invite August Vernon, Emergency Management Director, to come up and receive the resolution, and anyone else that may be with you.
Thank you, Chair Martin. Resolution recognizing September 2023 as National Preparedness Month in Forsyth County, North Carolina, where it's all North Carolinians should be prepared for natural and man-made disasters as well as disease outbreaks. Whereas North Carolina is traditionally an active state for tornadoes and severe thunderstorms with tornado touchdowns and straight-line winds causing severe damage in parts of the state this year. Whereas in 2022, the state of North Carolina experienced 21 tornado touchdowns, 74 flood incidents, and 951 severe thunderstorms with damaging wind and hail. Whereas in 2022, the National Weather Service in North Carolina issued 107 tornado warnings and 752 severe thunderstorm warnings with an average warning time of 18 minutes, and 82 flash flood warnings with an average warning time of 53 minutes. Whereas communities across the state have borne the impacts of wild fires, severe weather, damaging hail, high winds, and flooding. Whereas every community, business, family, and individual in Forsyth County must be ready for natural and man-made disasters, including tornadoes, flooding, hurricanes, and public disturbances that might disrupt normal daily activities. Whereas all Forsyth County residents can make a family disaster plan, an emergency supply kit, and stay informed to help make preparedness and personal responsibility a priority. Whereas Forsyth County residents should become aware of natural disaster risks in their area, help those who cannot help themselves, and include the safety of their pets and/or livestock in an emergency plan. And whereas Forsyth County Emergency Management and the state of North Carolina have collaborated to recognize September as North Carolina Preparedness Month to encourage Forsyth County citizen, residents to be disaster-ready. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners hereby recognizes the month of September as National Preparedness Month and encourages all county residents to plan and prepare for weather-related and man-made disasters by assembling their emergency supply kits and updating their emergency plans adopted this 21st day of September 2023. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion, I'll second it. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, August. Anything you'd like to add?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Just real fast, you hear the term resiliency a lot, and we certainly think this is very important to make sure that we have a try to develop and continue to work at having a resilient community. So thank you very much.
You. Turn around and take a picture. That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
The fifth item on the agenda is a resolution ratifying the amended pay plan and ordinance to appropriate funding to increase pay of various positions at the sheriff's office. And we have briefed this a couple of times, and we've gotten a couple, got a couple things yesterday, email issues. Anything else to say here?
I was just going to add, there's, there was a memo sent out by Shannon this morning. It clarified the issue of the kind of the total cost, and then if you, depending upon how you handled Commissioner Bessie's request for additional information around the cost. So hopefully that answered all your questions.
Good. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Oh, I'll just have my, I'll just have words during discussion. Sorry. Go ahead with the motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by, by Sheriff Wisnutt, motion by Commissioner McDaniel. All right, discussion, I have a couple things, but go ahead, Commissioner Woodbury.
Oh, thank you, Chair Martin. I would just like to say that, in just in all consideration of our citizens of, of the county and to be very transparent, I do want to thank staff for preparing additional information pertaining to the sheriff's salary based on the compensation analysis. I am aware that there was a meeting by the Commissioners last Thursday. I was not here, so I don't have, you know, full and complete update, but as soon as I can have what can be shared, since it was a closed session, I will do my best to update the community regarding that issue as well. Thank you.
Perhaps the comment and question I would have, just to be sure of the motion, that what we're talking about here is the rec, the original recommendations, which were basically a two-pay grade adjustment, I think, for detention officers and three-pay grade adjustment for deputies to be competitive and to, and to implement that in November, I believe is the date. Is that, I just make sure I'm summarizing that correctly.
October 28th.
October 28th. Any, any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move an amendment to the motion. That the pay grade increase for detention officers also be three grades, so that it would be three grades for both the deputies and the, uh, the detention officers. And if there's a second, I'll explain my rationale.
Is there a second?
Um, second. I don't mind, yeah. I don't want second, but I needed to know the cost analysis, if you have.
I believe it's going to be roughly on an annualized basis in the neighborhood of an additional $400,000.
I have Commissioner Woodbury as a second now. Discussion. $400,000 was the additional cost.
Yes. And the, the reason I'm recommending the additional increase for detention officers is because we clearly have a, a severe hiring retention problem with the, with the jail, detention facility. And whereas I am aware that pay is not the only issue involved there, I suspect it's always an issue in hiring in a tight market. This is clearly a tight market for detention officers, even more so than for deputies in doing enforcement in the general community. And that this is, uh, this is not the time to be perceived as leaving the detention officers a bit further behind in the, the pay increases. I think that it's a wise investment to make the additional increment and that, um, our, our county manager and budget staff will be able to, um, apply appropriate savings. And we can do so at their recommendation in order to accommodate the additional $400,000.
I'd, I'd like to speak against that. I think the, we actually employ, the Pima Triad Regional Consortium, basically to take a look and examine our pay grade, to look at comparisons as a pay study. We're looking to be in, in market, you know, competitive. And I think the study was very clear that we were marketed with a two-pay grade increase. We were marketably competitive for detention officers with a two-pay grade raise. And as soon as we start trying to second guess the people that we're employing to try to give us market pay comparisons, I think, I think you talk about slippery slope. I think, I, I don't think we are in a position to do that. And, and I also have, everybody has their own opinion, and you have an opinion in this market, we should not, we should be doing whatever, and that pay is a part of it. Yes, it is a part. But we have also completed our own study, in fact, two different times, that shows clearly that there are other issues besides pay. In fact, pay is not the number one issue that comes out from the very detention officers that we're trying to reward and maintain their, the stay here and to attract. So I, I'm not in favor of going in opposite, against the, our, our folks doing our market surveys, our market salary comparisons.
If I may speak briefly, and for the last time on this matter, I, I respect the chair's rationales on this. I think that we can look at the numbers in terms of the deficits in particular, in positions, and by noting that there are over 100 vacancies for detention officer, that we can reasonably take into account an assumption that the market is, is speaking through that factor, that even if we are competitive with other jurisdictions, the problem cuts across jurisdictions. And I believe that we can take cognizance of the factor that is increasingly difficult to fill those jobs, and that we can take, reasonably take that into account in determining what we need to do for salary.
Any other discussion?
Well, I will say I'm very, very appreciative of what the detention officers do. I think they have a horrendous job, but I am a little leery about going against the market study we pay to have these studies done that guide us in the best way possible. And so I'm, I will be voting against the motion.
The other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, there, there are two parts to the original motion. Part A, which is the change in the pay plan. Part B would transfer a million dollars from the general fund to the sheriff's office to pay for that. If I understand the information that was sent out this morning, the change by upgrading the positions of detention officers would be approximately $300,000 more for the current fiscal year. So I believe, and, and, and the finance people, budget people can correct me, but I believe if we were to pursue this motion to amend, I believe we would want to change part B to be 1.3 million.
We got to clarify our motion to make, to amend to make that explicit. Any other discussion?
Yeah, yeah, Chairman. Since we do have Sheriff Kimbrough in the building, I would like to ask you, how many times do you lose applicants in the pool because of pay? If you don't mind addressing that for me?
I think we have been having this conversation for quite some time about the pay of detention officer. I stood in here six months ago and pleaded with you all for a raise for them. There's a compilation, me and my friend had breakfast the other day, there's a compilation of things going on. And, and I'm just disturbed by the hypocrisy and the mediocrity that's taking place. We just saw where Purple Crow average pay is $72,000. These folk do twice the work that Purple Crow does. I love you, Ms. Wisnutt, you've been to the jail. I love you, McDaniel, you've been to the jail. I love you, all right. Some folk have never been there and understand what they do, but yet try to regulate the pay, and I'm just blown away by that. It doesn't make sense to me. We're losing, pay is irrelevant. It is relevant in every aspect of life.
Certainly.
Money is relevant, is relevant, is relevant, is relevant. And we talk about you don't want to second guess studies. We do that every day, Dr. Martin. You second guess the study that was given to you by the deputy commissioners. You second guess a lot of things. What you do is pick and choose. We can't continue to do this. We are in a crisis, and money is relevant.
Sheriff, did you happen to read the, the study they did that interviewed, basically, and got feedback from every detention officer in the jail?
Six, seven, eight, nine times. Doc, what I would ask you is this. You read the study, but have you ever physically been over to the jail since I've been there?
I'm actually coming over on Monday at 3 o'clock.
I say, have you?
I've been to the jail, not during your term.
Exactly. So it's not even a fair conversation. You, that's like trying to tell a surgeon how to perform surgery, and you've never been to medical school. And it is, it is upsetting to me. It is.
Well, I don't, first of all, just calm down, because I don't want you to be upset. I, I'm here to support. I, I'm here to support, I'm here to support you, my sheriff. I just needed to understand how many times you lose, because a substitute motion has been made. So my responsibility is regarding these, the budget for the county, right? So we're going to come up with it, but I just needed to just hear from you. I don't like making decisions, because I'm not a sheriff. I don't know what happens over there. Can you, can you use what we already had on the books, or do you want the substitute motion?
Yes, I want, I want what Commissioner Bessie is recommending.
Okay, thank you, sir. Blessings to you, have a blessed seat.
Now we're prepared, are, are we, prepared now to vote on the substitute motion?
How much is the additional money?
Oh, go ahead, Commissioner Louisville, I did have something to say before we take the vote.
1.3 million for the rest of this year, and next year it is more, as I recall.
It's more, it's more than 1.3 million, but that's what you would need to take from the general fund.
Just the differential, the other, and maybe, I don't know if Shannon's here, but if I, I hate to rely on my memory, but I believe it is something on the order, the actual request to do the, the two-pay grade increase for detention officers and three for deputies, I believe it's 3.38 million. Now we're talking about an additional 1.3 million if we start paying on October the 28th. The next year it will be, whatever that number is, between adding July and August and September and the part of October, it's going to end up being about 30% more next year than the 1.3 million. That's just the additional part on top of 3.8. So now we're moving into, talking about 5.1 million, this just for the remainder of this year. If I've done my arithmetic correctly.
Mr. Chairman, the annualized cost for the original recommendation is 3.8 million dollars, and for to match was about total 4.2 million, so there's about a $500,000 annualized difference.
What was the million, that, the million three that County Attorney?
Well, let me, let me, let me break in there to correct myself, that there were no totals that were presented in what was sent to you today, and so there was a number for vacant positions and a number for filled positions, so I'll correct myself, I don't have the exact number, but I think the number would really need to be 1.4 million, which is, so, so I think it's an additional 400,000 for the remainder of the current fiscal year.
Yeah, and, and, you know, Chairman, I will just say this, I totally respect our staff and our county manager, I appreciate you all so much, but when we get it wrong, we got to call it on the carpet, right? And we've gotten this study wrong, and these people have been waiting, and you see the passion that's coming from, and the compassion that's coming from our sheriff today, so we got to get the numbers right, and that's all we're asking, is just what are the numbers? He's saying this, he's saying that, I mean, it, it doesn't take a rocket science to plug in these numbers, I mean, an AI machine can do this.
The annualized cost of what we proposed, what staff has recommended, with an October 28th date of implementation, is 3.8 million. That includes, that includes filled positions, it includes vacancies, as well as fringe separation allowance if applicable, so that's the, the full cost of each position that would be involved is 3.8 million annualized cost.
Annualized as from October till the end of the fiscal year, or annualized in terms of 12 months?
12 months.
All right.
So with a, October 1st, I'm sorry, October 28th implementation, which we have November, because that's when employees are going to see that, on your chart in your packets, that's going to cost about 2.6 million.
Got it, I hear you. And doing the additional pay grade adjustment is another 400,000, annualized?
That's right, so with a, right, if, if we do an annualized, an annualized for vacant positions, we're looking at about 1.2 million dollars, just in the cost of those, and 3.2 million in field positions, so you're looking at a total annualized cost there of 4.4.
And, and obviously the complexity of this is how much impact is the salary adjustment going to make on our vacancy rate, right? And what we hope is that we, this crisis averts because you've addressed the staffing issue, which is really the source of everything that we've, that, that we're dealing with right now, and so when you're hearing the complexity of budgets, saying, where, where are we going to be, you've got to make some estimate of what our vacancy rate's going to look like as we go into next year's budget. What we hope is that this solves it, that the folks that are working over there gets the relief that they need, and that relief's going to come through addressing the staffing issue. But, but please, it, please understand that the complexity of this really is the vacancy issue that we have, and how that affects the overall cost as we move forward, so.
I need to clarify the, the figures that have been given. I, I remember hearing with the addition that it would be, instead of 3.8 million annualized, it would be 4.2 million dollars annualized. I just heard you say it was 4.4 million dollar annualized. Ken, are you?
I'm taking the numbers right off of the chart, so there, there are total, total lines on the chart, so you would be looking at the total cost, I'm so sorry, I hope you guys can see this, but the total cost, looking at the top.
Overhead, yeah.
Jesus Christ.
Can you help her, Chantel, please?
Okay. Okay, so in the, the first chart there, for the annualized cost, there's the total line, the total of vacant positions, that's total of all detention and total of all law enforcement vacant positions, is 134 vacancies, so you would be looking at one point, you know, a little over a million dollars there. With the filled positions, you're looking at a total of 400 filled positions for 2.7. So adding those together, it's 3.8. The November implementation, if we, if we implemented the pay plan on October 28th, you know, the cost of implementation through the rest of the year, the fiscal year, through the rest of the fiscal year, would be 2.6.
Now go to the second, below that.
Okay, and then, so for the matching, again, looking at the total column, same amount of vacancies, same amount of field, one point, right at 1.2 million dollars in cost for the vacancies, and then 3.2 for the field.
So, the motion is, the amended motion is basically voting on the 4.4 million annualized cost instead of 3.8. That is, that is what we're voting on. Are we clear? So all in favor, please say aye.
Yeah, I was waiting to say something before we went into the clarification of that, so I appreciate everyone's patience for continuation of discussion, but I want to thank Chair Martin for highlighting the study that we did, and based on that study, you know, I would say ironically, the sheriff had of, according to that study, 5% from the 3%, so maybe, you know, the support will, you know, come from that wise, based on, you know, Chair Martin's perspective of that study, which I can appreciate that study, so I wanted to, you know, be clear with that point. Secondly, I did visit the jail, and I would tell you that after I came from the jail, I was disturbed, had anxieties, and I told the sheriff, quite frankly, in our transparency, that I couldn't go back anytime soon. I just, it humbled me, and I really want the, our employees to know that, you know, as a, as a fellow citizen, and as also someone who represents you on the commission, I wish we could do more than what is being proposed, because either we're going to pay you directly as our employees, or we're going to pay indirectly, probably because of liability factors. It is 100% unsafe for you and those whom are incarcerated there, and they also have human rights to be safe, they're unsafe too, so I think that if we are trying to do, in my opinion, the humane thing, in addition to taking into consideration the studies, and being good stewards over our citizens' dollars, then I think we could come up with definitely at least what Commissioner Bessie is proposing. Thank you.
Now, are we ready to vote on the amended motion?
Just to clarify, Mr. Chairman, what you would be voting on is whether to amend the motion before you?
Yes, whether, whether to amend, we're not voting on the one point, we're whether to amend the current motion.
That's right, and, and.
Which, which, exactly, and what the amendment would be later, would, if this were to pass, then we would consider the next motion, which is the 4.4. This is just whether to vote on the 3.8, whether to vote on the 3.8.
What you're voting on would be an alternate pay plan that would increase the detention officers the same three steps, if I understand that correctly, and then the budget ordinance part of it, if I did my math correctly, the difference for the current fiscal year is 409,527 dollars, so I think you could just call it 1.4 million in, in the budget.
Additional cost.
Yeah.
No, no, not additional, it'd be on top of the 3.8.
No, no, the, the budget ordinance amendment is to transfer money from the general fund to, to the sheriff's office, which will make up with other money, it'll make up the, the difference, and so instead of being 1 million, it would be 1.4 million, if, if you, if this motion passes.
Okay, so, let's vote on the amended motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
So it looks like we're three to three, and there's no action on the amendment, so now can we return to the first motion. Correct, Mr. County Attorney?
I believe the first motion has already been seconded, so you could have discussion on that and then, then vote.
Any discussion on the first original motion, which is the two pay grades and three pay grades? Go ahead.
I'll discuss, I, I will vote for the original motion, I think the amended motion would have been better, but the significant increases in, in salaries for both the deputies and the detention officers under the original motion is not as good, but it's good.
I think the prudent thing would have been, in our fairness to the detention officers, probably to vote when we have all of our members, I think that this is an unfair representation of what we're trying to do.
Are we ready to vote now on the original motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Right. Let me see, sorry, make sure I hadn't skipped the, approval of minutes, next item is approval of minutes, a meeting August 31st, 2023, do you have a motion? Motion by Vice Chair Wisniewski, I'll second that. Any discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Now, Madam Clerk, do we have any calls or cards from the public session?
Mr. Chairman, we don't have any calls, but we have one speaker card.
Great, all righty, thank you.
Alex Nelson, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
Sorry it took you so long, I'm getting kind of old. Alex Nelson, 6775, Ronaldo Road, Poth Town, facility that, that we own here in Winston-Salem. Go on into the speaking.
Okay.
August the 12th of this year, there's, I see the tension in this room, and I see everybody, I can even see the tension, I know there's been no real heated arguments ever in this facility, has there? None back here? August the 12th, this body came together, and we had this real big conversation about why did George Jetson never get a parking ticket? And I know it's kind of funny, but that this body, a lot of you did, it was called Trivia Night for the Troops, and we invited a lot of people, we had over 200 people come from all over North Carolina, I think eight different counties was represented. We had people from Raleigh come in, state representatives, city representatives, a mayor's table came together, Trivia Night for the Troops. Ladies and gentlemen, we lose 22 to 23 service members, veterans, a day to suicide, and a lot of times we just, we just kind of shrug it off. I called some organizations, I'm not going to call their name and disrespect them, because I want them to be a part of this next year, but the first thing they asked me was, are you a Republican? That's the first thing they asked me. Second thing I got from some, are you a Democrat? I am a retired command sergeant major of the United States Military Service, was 33 years in, and those people that ask that should be embarrassed, because at the end of the day, we're all Americans, and we've been going at it for each other, it's become so toxic, that when I lose a veteran, I don't ask, are you Republican? Or are you Democrat? Or are you Muslim? Are you Catholic? Are you Protestant? But when I asked this board if you guys could be a part of me, I didn't get that, I didn't get that question, and you're not going to get that answer either. If you, you've talked to my wife, if I don't get home soon to pick up my child, I'll be called a lot of different things, besides Republican and Democrat, so I'm going to try to make this quick, and I know I have a time limit. But I came here because you had Mayor of rural hall, and Mayor of East Bend had their beautiful wives with them, and they had a table, and out of 28 teams from all over the state of North Carolina, they came in third. Would anybody like to guess who came in first?
Forsyth County.
Can somebody raise their hand back here that was there? Okay, Forsyth County Commissioners, I believe, was it more than just the county commissioners at that team, was a city involved, just county?
No, just the county.
Just county. Right over here, county commissioners for Forsyth County, and I want to challenge our next, now, on this Trivia Night for the Troops, now Veterans Coffee, we go around and we try to actually get where we say the rubber meets the road, and we talk to these veterans, and we talk to people, and we go where they're at. Because my goal, our goal, your goal, I hope, is to turn that 23 a day down to 22, and to 21, and to 20. We save one veteran a day in the year of 2020, 23, 2024, that means we saved 365 young American heroes' lives. Now I want to ask this board, I'm going to ask people here, what would you do to save 365 people? I would low crawl through glass for a mile. Now on the 27th of April, we're going to have another trivia night, and what the beautiful thing about this is, I didn't hear any complaints, any arguments in this room, with the exception of, hey, Sergeant Major, it's too hot in here. Right? Can't do nothing about the air conditioning, I'm hoping in April it's going to be better. But it's about time we come together as Americans, and I can't think of anything else better than these young veterans' lives that was willing to give it all. Some did pay all, but all were willing, and I'm asking you to help, I'm asking people behind me to help. I want to challenge the county commissioner groups from multiple counties around us to come in and do the same, and I, I have a big trophy, how big was that trophy, you may remember, about three foot, big trophy, and it's got, let me see, county commissioners for Forsyth County, and a little bitty golden plaque, right up first, you took the first place, the first team of the first Trivia Night for the Troops, the veterans. the Veterans' Coffee. I challenge them to come try to take the second, and I'm hoping that this group comes together and discusses whatever else we can try to discuss on that day. Defend your cup. God bless you. Thank you for not just being one of those people that says, I appreciate your service, stick out your hand, get your photo up, and walk away. I want you to come together and do good things for good people for good reasons. And I challenge everyone else to do the same. I went over my minutes, I'm sure. Please forgive me, don't throw anything at me as I leave. Also, Veterans' Day Parade is the 4th of November. I know who's running it. I know who's organizing it. So please come out and help and let's support at a time when we are so divided. We're divided because we choose to. Choose not to. Any questions for me? Old man leaving now.
Thank you.
Ms. Chairman?
Thank you very much.
Yes. Thank you.
Yes, I'd ask for a racist.
All right. Why don't we take about 10 minutes max, and we'll reconvene at 5:00.
Thank you, thank you.
If we can get back into session and apologize for that. All right, we are now ready, Mr. Chairman.
All right, very good. And I'll try to collapse a few of these where it makes sense. We can get on through a fairly large agenda, but it's pretty straightforward. We have briefed these items in open session and hopefully have answered all the questions as we go through, but it's, the meeting is fairly, has a lot of kind of housekeeping items in them. So anyway, I'll jump into them. We've got some budget and finance items. Item eight is an amendment to the fiscal year 24, 22, 23, 24 budget ordinance. It appropriates adoption promotion incentive funds to Forsyth County Department of Social Services in the amount of $230,433.2. And that's good news. It is based on the number of adoptions finalized, so that's a good reflection.
They've approved them.
Second.
Motion approved by Vice Chair Wizinut, second by Commissioner McDaniel. Any discussion? On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous.
Very good. Item 11 is a resolution authorizing the submission of the fiscal year 23, 24 Home and Community Care Block Grant Funding Plan for Older Adults Authorizing the Execution Necessary Documents to Submit the Plan for State Approval. This will fund 17 programs, totaling $2,201,349.
They've approved them.
Motion approved by Vice Chair Wizinut.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McDaniel. Any discussion? On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous.
Very good. Item 11 is a resolution authorizing the submission of the fiscal year 23, 24 Home and Community Care Block Grant Funding Plan for Older Adults Authorizing the Execution Necessary Documents to Submit the Plan for State Approval. This will fund 17 programs, totaling $2,201,349.
They've approved them.
Motion approved by Vice Chair Wizinut.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McDaniel. Any discussion? On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous.
Item 12 is an amendment to the fiscal year 24 budget ordinance that reduces the budget reserve set aside non-departmental and increases the public health budget for spatial justice contract in the amount of $75,000 in public health, public relations, in the amount of $19,600. That is a correction to the 24 budget.
Motion.
They've approved them.
Motion approved by Vice Chair Wizinut.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McDaniel. Any discussion? On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous.
I believe you can take items 13, 14, and 15 together. They are agreement addends with the state of North Carolina for public health expenditures. You've got one for the breastfeeding peer support council program in the amount of $162,981. And item 14, it is to the ELC enhancing detection activities in the amount of $2,661,353. And item 15 is the nurse family partnership in the amount of $3,858.
They've approved of 13, 14, 15.
Approved by Vice Chair Wizinut.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McDaniel. Any discussion? On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous.
Item 16 is an amendment to the fiscal year 24 budget. It appropriates fund balance to transfer to the 2016 Colladium Museum capital project ordinance for $700,000. Just cleans up the, a transfer that needs to happen for that total project budget.
They've approved them.
Approved by Vice Chair Wizinut. I'll second it. Any discussion?
I do have a question.
All right.
Because of course I wasn't here when it was voted upon originally, so I guess my question is, in lieu of the amount of the $30 million project, why is there a need for the additional $700,000 contingency?
It was always, that was just part of that budget. It was really always in there, and it had been budgeted earlier, and it just needed to carry into the project budget, so.
It's just a technicality, in other words.
It was really an accounting, housekeeping matter, so.
Yeah, it was budgeted, but it was sitting aside, and now it's being needed.
Yeah, and that colladium project was funded out of lots of different actions over a number of years, and so it, you know, it's, and then some state budget money came in, and so it was, it was just a culmination of a lot of things that happened over a long time to make it happen.
Good. Is there a motion? Oh, we already did that. Any further discussion? On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous.
Item 17 is also kind of a housekeeping matter in the 24 budget. There was a budget reserve that was set aside non-departmental, and this will increase the sheriff's office budget for the Women's Behavioral Health Unit Pilot Project in the Detention Center at the amount of $264,840.
They've approved them.
Approved by Vice Chair Wizinut. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner McDaniel, excuse me. On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous.
Item 18 is amendment to the 2020 Motor Vehicles and Mobile Equipment Replacement Capital Project ordinance to close out and transfer residual funds to a new sub-fund of the general fund, really an accounting change in how we account in a multi-year fund for vehicle purposes and for my new commissioners. We really set that up so that we don't create some kind of artificial incentive for, for staff to go ahead and spend money at year-end before they lose it for vehicle purchases, and it allows us just to make a better decision by pushing things off. A lot of times it's model year, deliver availability and all that, and so this does shift out $1,088,477.
Motion approved.
Motion by Commissioner Linville. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner, Vice Chair Wizinut. Any discussion? On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous.
And I think we can take 19 and 20 together, even though they're in different sections. Item 19 is adoption of the 2024 Housing Grant Projects Ordinance that establishes a kind of a structure for all those housing programs and those funds that the community and economic development folks manage in the amount of $491,905. And then item 20 is really new grant funding in an interlocal agreement with the city of Winston-Salem, really to provide those services that we do so well, and we'll basically manage that program for them. That would add $1.5 million and two additional staff folks to do that.
They've approved them.
Motion approved by Vice Chair Wizinut. Second by Commissioner McDaniel. Any discussion? On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Item 21 is an amendment to the fiscal year 23, 24 budget. It appropriates fund balance for the medication assistance treatment grant in the Forsyth County Sheriff's Office in the amount of $388,884.
Is there a motion?
They've approved them.
Motion approved by Vice Chair Wizinut. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner McDaniel. Any discussion? On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous.
And the last grant matters, item 22, it's an amendment to the fiscal year 24 budget ordinance to appropriate funds from the Appalachian District Health Department, $99,755, and that will support environmental health activities.
They've approved them.
Approved by Vice Chair Wizinut. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner McDaniel. Any discussion? On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous.
All right, we have a number of contracts, and I'll dive into these. I did not group these together, but I may group some of the public safety folks together as I look at it right now. Item 23 is resolution authorizing participation in Carolina Cross 100s, our state, our well-being program. It's a collaborative learning model focused on improving mental health and reducing suicide in North Carolina. There's a $20,000 fund that kind of comes with that, and I think we'll be hearing about that more as we move forward. I know Denise just got back, and she's got good news to present around that.
They've approved them.
Motion approved by Vice Chair Wizinut.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McDaniel. Any discussion? On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous.
Very good. I'm going to take items 24, 25, and 26 together. They all kind of deal with the health department. Item 24 is a resolution authorizing execution agreement between Forsyth County and Hollogic Sales and Service Incorporated to provide maintenance support of laboratory equipment, purchase of reagents and lab supplies. We do run a pretty robust lab out of public health, the amount of that kind, and that really supports that lab. It's not to exceed $425,000. Item 25 is a resolution authorizing the purchase of COVID-19 vaccines from Moderna and Pfizer and Norovax in the amount not to exceed $750,000. And then the last one there is next year, an agreement between Forsyth County and Wake Forest University Baptist Medical Center for mammography screening and diagnostic services in the amount not to exceed $115,000. That'd be 24, 25, and 26.
They've approved them.
Motion approved by Vice Chair Wizinut.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McDaniel. Any discussion? On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous.
Item 27 is a resolution authorizing execution amendment, an agreement to an amendment between Forsyth County and Vanguard Professional Staffing Incorporated. It's for merit-based temporary staff for food and nutrition services, not to exceed $200,000.
They've approved them.
Motion approved by Vice Chair Wizinut.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McDaniel. Any discussion? On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous.
Item 28 is a resolution authorizing the purchase of 22 additional GIS licenses from Environmental Research Systems, or ESRI, using the state of North Carolina contract pricing not to exceed $323,500.
They've approved them.
Motion approved by Vice Chair Wizinut.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McDaniel. Any discussion? On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous.
And items 29, 30, and 31 are all, deal with public safety vehicles and getting them upfit. Item 29 is a resolution awarding a purchase of a special weapons and tactics, or SWAT team support vehicle to Matthews Specialty Vehicles Incorporated in the amount of $175,093. That is using the sheriff's forfeiture funds. Item 30 is a resolution awarding and authorizing execution for a contract purchase of equipment to outfit the Dodge Chargers as part of our regular patrol vehicles in the amount of three, 30, hmm, 28 vehicles, not to exceed $104,217.16. Then item 31 is a resolution awarding a contract for the installation of equipment on public safety vehicles not to exceed $78,100.
They've approved them. 29, 30, 31.
Motion approved by Vice Chair Wizinut.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McDaniel. Any discussion? On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
You've got two property matters, I believe, to take together. They are both easements. Item 32 is resolution authorizing grant and execution of a utility easement to Duke Energy Carolinas. That's for the 799 North Howland Avenue, really to accommodate development on and around the Health and Human Services campus. And then 33 is also an easement to Duke Energy to, to allow for the development of Blues Lake Park.
Move to approve.
Motion approved by Commissioner Linville.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bessie and McDaniel. Any discussion? On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And the rest, next appointments, and I'll hand that off to Vice Chair Wizinut.
Okay, first of all, I would like to thank all the folks who applied for these positions, and they're very important to the county, and we're grateful. The first one is the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee. We had six openings. We have one citizen wishing to serve, Alice Adler, and one citizen, and that's an incumbent, and one citizen wishing to serve, Cynthia Simmons, and I move that we appoint these by acclamation.
Second. Second by, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous.
Next is the Animal Service Advisory Committee. One appointment for acting chairman, president of the Forsyth County Veterinary Association, that's Tracy Turner, and it can be appointed by acclamation.
Second that. Any, all in favor?
Aye.
Say aye.
Community Appearance Commission, Winston-Salem, Forsyth County, two appointments. We did not have any applicants. I move that this be continued to a future meeting.
Yep. I'm sorry, yes, sorry.
Community Child Protection Team, Child Fatality Prevention Team, there's eight appointments. We have one from the Winston-Salem Police Department, he's an incumbent, Thomas Albert. Citizens wishing to serve is Andrew Davis, Emergency Service Representative, and a parent of a child who died before age 18, Tramona Purvis. And these can be approved, I move that they be approved by acclamation.
On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Experiment in Self-Reliance, you may vote for two. An incumbent wishing to serve is Carol Mitchell, and citizens wishing to serve are Joanne Levy and Kathy Webb. You may vote for two. I move that these be, that we vote on these two. Take me a minute. Forsyth County Historic Resources Commission, we have one appointment for a local historic landmark property owner. Those wishing to serve is Seth Gatto, John Hannah, Jane Harper Janeway, Nan Harper Janeway, and Bryce Sherburne, and you may vote for one.
Sorry. Oh, I didn't do that. Sorry. I think I'm 2:00 a.m. All right. Man.
Forsyth County Home and Community Care Block Grant Advisory Committee, we have three open seats. The citizen wishing to serve is Wayne Opel. I move that he be appointed by acclamation and that we continue the remaining appointments.
On favor?
Aye.
Say aye.
Forsyth County Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, we have seven appointments. Citizens wishing to serve is George Banks for Faith Community, Jennifer Martin, District Attorney Designee, and Sharon Singletary Business Community. This can be appointed by acclamation and continue the remaining appointments.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Industrial Facilities and Pollution Control Finance and Authority, we do not have any applicants. Move that this be continued to a future meeting.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee, Forsyth County, 12 appointments.
The citizens wishing to serve is Kamala Coleman, Kay Wall, and Kathy Webb. Move that it be, these be appointed by acclamation and continue the remaining appointments.
On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Piedmont Triad Regional Workforce Development Board, we have three appointments. Citizens wishing to serve are Mark McReddy, Darlan Poole, and Sherman Simmons. I move that these be appointed by acclamation.
On favor?
Aye.
Piedmont Triad Regional Workforce Development Board, one appointment. The citizens wishing to serve is Robert Eggleston, community-based, and Liza Lamb, community-based, and you may vote for one.
Mr. Chairman, Robert Eggleston received majority vote.
Zoning Board of Adjustments, Forsyth County, we have four appointments. Incumbents wishing to serve is Gregory Hairston and Philip Rector. Citizens wishing to serve is Richard Baraki and Alfred Mitchell. You may vote for two. Zoning Board of Adjustment, Forsyth County, there's four appointments, and we did not receive any applicants. I move that it be continued to a future meeting.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Zoning Board of Adjustments, Winston-Salem, two appointments. We did not receive any applicants, and I move that it be continued to a future meeting.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That completes our appointments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
All right. So the remaining agenda, we item 47 are reports. You've got the fuel surcharge franchise report. If I'm reading it correctly, it actually dropped a little bit over the last quarter, so.
Move to approve.
Motion approved by Commissioner Linville. I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
All right, we have a couple of added items. Item 48 was, is a resolution requesting the North Carolina General Assembly to pass a state budget as soon as possible. I think they got news of that, and they're working busily on that, but whatever your pleasure is, is whether you want to, want to.
The House has already passed it.
All right.
Senate is taking it up momentarily.
So we don't want to jinx it, but whatever you want to, whatever you want to do.
Do we need a motion to simply remove that from the agenda?
Or just take no action, I guess, would be the. You want me to go on to the next item, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Okay. Item 49 is a resolution adjusting the compensation for Forsyth County tax assessor-collector. Y'all went in the closed session, discussed his performance and adjusted salaries accordingly.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Linville.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McDaniel. Any discussion? On favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
So that is it for the formal meeting. We do have a briefing session that we can go straight into, and we do have a closed session for this afternoon, but this.
That could be abbreviated version.
The abbreviated version? We can, we can do that. So I guess we need to adjourn and jump straight in, but we can, I, we can do that.
I would like to share one thing. I did talk to Commissioner Plaller yesterday, and he's ready, he cannot be here today, and he just said, he actually said, "In my memory, this is the first meeting I've ever missed." I just wanted to say, that's pretty spectacular, but anyway, we hope he's back soon.
Very good. All right.
With apologies, I'm going to briefly go and represent the board on the Transportation Advisory Committee, and I'll get off that as soon as I can and come join you in the closed session.
Thank you. Okay. Do we need to adjourn the regular meeting?
Motion to adjourn the regular meeting.
Yes.
Second.
I'll motion, yeah, second. Any, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Sorry.
Let me make sure these guys don't need us to stop. They're just all. They also understand time is of the essence, so we're good. So, yeah, so the briefing side of the agenda today, we really have items for consideration for the October 5th meeting. There were sort of two other issues out there, and if I could get Kimberly Buss to come up real quickly, just needed to finalize this citizen survey. She had worked to clarify some language in conjunction with the survey contractor, ETC, and so she can show you that, and if that looks good, we will get about the business of surveying, so. Yep. There you go.
Commissioners, so very quickly, we've, you've received this email from me. Since last Thursday, there was a little change to that question number 27 that we were talking about last week, and we made an adjustment here and moved it up to question number nine. It's highlighted on the screen. It says, "How supportive would you be of a tax increase if it were used to fund the major category of services that you, or service that you indicated should receive the most emphasis in question number eight?" So really, that work to give that whole list of services that we've already given, the respondent, and kind of worked from there. And so happy to hear any thoughts, changes, and if not, we're ready to move forward.
Thank you, yes.
I'll say it was a creative solution.
So that I can also make sure that I'm confirming, so when we get the responses back, the, the folks will be able to tell us where in my district they're saying those results are coming from.
They, they will be able to tell you the results based on your district, yes.
Okay.
Yes. Well, what we, the option to have that, when we can cross have any data that you want to see after that, too, as well.
I'd like to just see where they want and where they don't.
Absolutely.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Anything else?
All right, so we are off and surveying, and thanks to budget management, and thanks to Kimberly for her leadership in this effort, along with others. The other matter just is almost just kind of an announcement thing. Damon, do you want to talk about sort of where the committee's leaning towards the opening day, opening celebration of the courthouse?
So the discussion was to look at Sunday, October 22nd, but I understand that may not work, so we're maybe trying to move that back. I've heard some other dates proposed, maybe the October 7th or 8th, but to move that back from the 22nd.
So the 22nd did not work?
That's what I understand.
Oh, okay. That, I just got news to that. So, we're still about the business of trying to figure out when that event can happen. Okay.
Did you say October the 8th?
7th or 8th, I had heard. I mean, I'm just repeating that, but I thought it was the 22nd, and then it sounded like that's not going to work.
Yeah, okay. So, we, we will be back, we will be communicating with you as we can try to pin down this date, given the move schedule and the judge's conference and the DA's conference and your busy schedule and everything else. So, all right, I was under the presumption that had been, that coffin had been nailed shut, but it is not, so we'll, we'll keep trucking. All right. Very good. Then the other item is obviously the items for consideration for the October 5th meeting. We have one public hearing matter, which we normally kind of brief in full for that, and so that, if I can get Dan Rankin to come up with, he's the project planner who's been working in a UDO amendment, and he can see how tired you are, and he's been waiting patiently, so just, Daniel, and Daniel's been a good partner with us on a whole lot of different kind of projects, so he'll talk a little bit about this UDO amendment.
I hope you got a lot of emails and texts handled in the last two hours.
Right. He probably designed, who knows what. Daniel actually has been, you know, he works for, obviously for the city and the development services arena with, with Chris, but, but if y'all remember Marco, he would do a lot of the landscape design work, while Daniel is, is actually equivalently qualified as a landscape architect person, so he has done a ton of work with us up at the Ag Center Park, and so he's created some pretty amazing work, and so we appreciate that, so.
Thank you, Dudley. I appreciate it. Chairman Martin, members of the Forsyth County Commissioners, appreciate you here in the side in this afternoon.
You can see it, that are Commissioners.
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
Just hold that right there.
That's fine. Oh. Okay. Okay.
I'm sorry about that, Dan.
No.
Showing up now? Okay, thank you.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. I'll try to move through this as quickly as I can, you know, time's kind of of the essence. I'm here this afternoon to present to you a text amendment, a proposed text amendment for unified development ordinances, and the purpose of the text amendment is just to introduce new and improved graphics into that document to better illustrate it for our code users and readers, and just to make the document more user-friendly. So, just a lot of illustrations. The impetus for this text amendment dates back to 2018, when staff was working with an external consultant developing the UDO, and one of that consultant's main comments was that we could greatly benefit from adding, adding graphics. So, as a consequence of that, an initial set of 24 graphics were developed in a short time thereafter, and were approved in the fall of 2020. Staff also developed a consistent visual style as part of that process, and the development of additional graphics was a key work program item for planning board for the last fiscal year. It is really, really important to note that what we're proposing is not to alter the UDO in any way, shape, or form in terms of the ordinance provisions or requirements. Instead, we're just merely seeking to illustrate it. A total of 93 graphics are being proposed, and they generally utilize that pre-established visual style, which is in 3D, but we do use some more traditional 2D, 2D graphics as well. And the majority of the graphics are brand-new to the UDO. This is, this is one of the brand-new graphics. This graphic illustrates the general dimensional requirements within the residential multifamily and limited district within our city and county. It's also a good example of that 3D visual style and its, its color scheme, and we now have graphics similar to this for most all of the different zoning districts that we utilize. Here's an example of a U-specific standard graphic. This graphic illustrates most of the requirements of small home, child, daycare uses. It's a fairly simple example of the U-specific standard graphics. Some of them get a little more complicated. Here we have an example of a replacement graphic. Graphic on the right-hand side is the existing graphic as it is. Graphic on the left-hand side is the proposed graphic, and they both illustrate minimum dimensions for parking requirements within our city and county. And last, this is the last example. This, again, just like the last slide, graphic on the right-hand side is the existing graphic, on the left-hand side is the proposed replacement. These graphics just illustrate the different yards. And again, this is, this is just a few of the examples of the 93 graphics, but again, we're not really changing the, the requirements or provisions of the UDO. These are just illustrations of the existing law as it is. So, the summary here, staff, we do believe that the graphics included in this amendment substantially complete the process of illustrating the UDO. However, we certainly recognize that additional graphics might be warranted as the, in the future, as the UDO changes and as new planning and zoning concepts get introduced into the document. A summary of the recommendations here, this item was heard at the June public meeting of the City-County Planning Board. There were no speakers in opposition to the motion, or the item, and the planning board did vote unanimously to approve the request. Similarly, City Council heard the item at its September 5th public meeting. Similarly, no speakers in opposition, and the City Council also unanimously voted to adopt the proposed text amendment. So, I'll leave it at that, and I thank you very much for your time. Certainly be happy to answer any questions by that. So, thank you so much.
Well, those graphics are much more user-friendly and actually convey what the, it's just easy to follow for everybody. Looks a lot better. The 3Ds really makes a difference. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Thanks, Daniel. All right. The remainder of the agenda, there are four special resolution items that are pretty straightforward, and so I'm not going to read through all of those. Three, but three budget finance matters, you know, which are, which are pretty much kind of normal, normal matters. Three grant matters, and then seven contract matters, and a property matter really relating to the demolition of the, we purchased, we closed on the property there on North Liberty Street that was the old C-MAX factory. So, we're actually going to start trying to really clean that site up and so on and so forth. So, unless there's something that you're particularly interested, we are still working to finalize all of these items, but, Mr. Chairman, unless you want me to read through the list individually, I won't.
Anyone wishes to hear about any more of those, speak now.
Yeah. And you'll certainly get, you know, you'll get a full, full review of those next Thursday.
All righty.
All right. So, the last item I have is just closed session, unless I missed something. Let me, I'm good. Okay.
You know what? I apologize. Can we just be a little bit clear in terms of item number 21, so that clarity can be given to the constituency and those watching relative to the three appointments and how that's.
Yeah. So, as I understand, the Health and Human Services appointments, they come in with everything else. They go to the Health and Human Services Board, and after they've done whatever they do with them, yeah, let me be quiet, let me.
No, thank you, Mr. Manager. So, the Health and Human Services Board provides a recommendation to the Commissioners, and our next meeting is October 4th, so they'll do their recommendation and vote, and then you all will see what their recommendation is, and you can decide whether you want to approve it or not on the 5th.
Is that the only board that we use, this structure?
No, ma'am. There's, there are a few other boards that do the same thing.
Fair enough.
Most of that statutory, I believe, though. Isn't it? That's fair. Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Also, under budget and finance for number seven, can the county Health Department maybe come and do an update on any COVID changes in our county since there's an issue of getting the, maybe the testing?
Yeah. Yeah, we did. We actually had.
Good on Thursday. Okay.
Yeah, Joshua did one last Thursday, but he can certainly come back in and.
I can just.
Yeah.
I can connect you with Joshua with no problem.
Can I just say real quickly that if you all remember last November on Veterans Day, the entire week we did the green lights, and it was really, really nice. I hope we can do that again this year and, and make sure all the departments know about it, because they did a great job last year.
I think that's a regular, regular thing now, so.
I agree with that. It was nice.
All right. Closed session motion?
Yes.
All right. Need to ask the board to consider a motion to go into closed session to discuss two matters, to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer or employee, or prospective public officer or employee presented in Vision of North Carolina General Statute 143, 318, 1186, and a matter to consult with attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, which privilege is hereby acknowledged pursuant to Vision of General Statute 143, 318, 1183. Since there's no other business coming forward, this meeting, following the closed session, the meeting will be adjourned.
Right. Great.
Will be in the large conference.
Motion approved, we second it. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And we need a motion to, we need to adjourn this.
Yep. Yep. Large conference.